For those of you that are watching on YouTube, we apologize for the technical difficulties. We're trying to get them fixed and hopefully we'll have them fixed by the end. The meeting is available on Zoom and the links are included in our packets online. And I believe they are also on the screen on the YouTube channel, correct, right now. Let's go ahead, everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one, the people, and justice for all.
Okay, so we can't, they're not seeing it on Zoom right now? Okay, are they able to participate? Okay, then let's move forward until, because we can go on to this meeting. Let's do a roll call, please, while he works on that. You okay with that?
Let the record reflect that all council members are present, except for Councilmember Cruz and Vice Mayor Walter.
Thank you. Any conflict of interest declarations? Seeing none, any changes to the, or deletions to the agenda? Yep. Thank you. I have that on my list, I appreciate that.
All right, I will update the...
Let the record reflect at 6:05, Councilmember Cruz is now present. Moving forward, be public comments, any...
Mayor, just to, reporting out of closed session, there was no reportable action.
Did I skip that? Where did I miss that one at? That's just not on my list. I apologize, Alex.
Oh, it's fine, I just wanted to make sure we didn't skip it. It's under A above, right below real.
Oh, real, I see, it's different than the legislative, I apologize.
So, no reportable action for the record.
Thank you.
Well, and if you look here, it shows that roll call, report out, all on the same line.
So I totally missed, okay, sorry. Moving forward, be public comments. Any person wishing to speak to the City Council on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public have the right to speak on any item on the council agenda at the time the item comes up for consideration. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Per City Council policy, three minutes are allotted to each speaker. Do we have anyone in the public that likes to make a public comment right now?
Mayor Lance, it looks like no one online is raising their hand and no one in the chamber is standing to for comment.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to C, Proclamations Zero Waste 2022. Is there anyone, oh, go ahead. I also see a Nikki Burke from Ecology, is that possibly related as well? Okay, perfect, thank you, sir. Is there anyone that would like to read this proclamation? Seeing none? Okay. Proclamation of the City of Cloverdale in support of North Bay Zero Waste Week, July 24th through the 30th of 2022. Whereas the City of Cloverdale is a member of Zero Waste Sonoma, which is a joint powers authority, the mission of Zero Waste Sonoma is waste diversion required by state law AB 939. Zero Waste Sonoma's programs include household hazardous waste, composting, zero waste planning, policy, and education. And whereas the U.S. EPA has estimated 50% of all greenhouse gas emissions are caused by the extraction, production, transportation, and use of goods, including food, products, and packaging, and that zero waste minimizes greenhouse gas production and therefore supports Sonoma County's climate initiative. And whereas in 2020, Sonoma County residents and businesses sent 423,648.58 tons to the landfill, generating approximately 105,000 tons of carbon dioxide equivalent from decomposting organic matter. And whereas the short-lived Climate Pollutants Reduction Act of 2016, SB 1383, requires a 20% reduction of edible food waste by 2025 and a 40% reduction in methane levels by 2030. And whereas the jurisdictions in Sonoma County have collectively adopted regional goals for waste reduction, reuse, and recycling, these goals are stated in countywide integrated Waste Management Plan, as well as the Sonoma County Regional Climate Action Plan. And whereas the Sonoma County Central Landfill, a very valuable resource worth preserving, has a remaining capacity of 23 years. And whereas zero waste principles, in accordance with Cal Recycles, Zero Waste Hierarchy, promote the highest and best use of materials, emphasize a closed-loop system of production and consumption, and move in logical increments towards the goal of reducing waste generation in landfill disposal by more than 90% through improving downstream reuse and recycling of end-of-life products and materials to ensure their highest and best use, pursuing upstream redesign strategies to reduce the volume and toxicity of discarded products and materials, and promote less wasteful lifestyles, fostering and supporting the use of discarded products and materials to stimulate and drive local economic workforce development, preserving land for sustainable development and green industry infrastructure. And whereas a resource recovery-based economy will create and sustain more productive and meaningful jobs than a disposal-based economy. And whereas the City of Cloverdale has assumed a leadership role by setting zero waste as a goal and adopting a zero-waste resolution and sets a goal of zero waste by 2030. Now therefore be it resolved, the City of Cloverdale hereby encourages the pursuit of zero waste as a long-term goal in order to eliminate waste and pollution in the manufacture, use, storage, and recycling of materials. This goal can be achieved through action plans and measures that significantly reduce waste and pollution. These measures will include encouragement of residents, businesses, and agencies to judiciously use, reuse, and recycle materials, and motivation of businesses to manufacture and market less toxic and more durable, repairable, reusable, recycled, recyclable products. Be it further resolved, the City of Cloverdale hereby adopts the concept of zero waste as defined by Zero Waste International Alliance as a guiding principle for all municipal operations, outreach, and programs and actions within the community. Now therefore, I, Todd Lanz, on behalf of the City, Cloverdale City Council, do hereby proclaim July 24th through the 30th of 2022 Zero Waste Week in the City of Cloverdale, so ordered myself.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, you didn't want to read it, but you want to go first, huh?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, please, Councilmember Cruz.
I couldn't hear, and Leslie Lucas is on the line, and she just finally heard, just like me, just now. So, you know, our apologies, but it must be a technical issue. But she's online, so you could promote her or something, I don't know.
Leslie, welcome, thank you for being here, the floor is yours.
Great, thank you very much. I just really want to thank the Cloverdale Council for recognizing Zero Waste Week with this proclamation. Zero Waste Week has been organized by many community stakeholders, including Ecology, the AB 939 Task Force, Community Markets, Sonoma County Master Food Preservers, Sonoma Clean Power, just many nonprofits concerned citizens, and more. Zero Waste Week actually started on Sunday and goes until this Saturday with 30 events that have been organized throughout the week. Sunday's kickoff event was a fix-it clinic and clothes exchange with over 100 people in attendance to get small appliances and lamps fixed, knives sharpened, and bikes repaired. Other events happening throughout this week include tours of Ecology's recycling facility, a tour of Waste Management's compost facility at Redwood Landfill where Sonoma County's organics material is delivered to, a food scrap cooking demo, roadside cleanups, cleaning event, recycled art show, canning classes, and many more. So, please visit the Zero Waste Week website at zerowastenorthbay.org for more information.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Bagby. Councilmember Paula. Councilmember Cruz, anything else?
Yes, I want to thank the Board of Zero Waste Sonoma, with which I've been working for a while now. And I particularly thank Director Leslie Lucas, because I think she's speaking to us from the hospital where she's attending her husband. So, thank you very much for taking the time to address the Cloverdale Council. And I want to also acknowledge the work of the Chamber of Commerce for being so collaborative with Zero Waste Sonoma in terms of informing all businesses, as well as all of our constituents of the programs, and how to make our world a better one. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Leslie.
Mayor, if I can, just to add, we do have a signed proclamation for this item tonight, and we can provide that to Councilmember Cruz, who is our representative on the Board for Zero Waste Sonoma, who in turn can provide a copy to Leslie Lucas.
Thank you. Okay, C2, Presentation on Update on Water's 10-Year Financial Plan.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. At this time, I'd like to ask our city clerk to go ahead and promote Mark Hildebrand. Mark is our rate consultant that prepared our five-year rate study. And while he joins us here shortly, I'll just give an overview of this item tonight. Tonight, you're going to hear a presentation providing an update on the Water Enterprise's 10-Year Financial Plan. We are asking for any direction that you'd like us to take in terms of outcomes relative to the presentation. Just by way of background, this update reflects some material changes that have occurred since the council adopted the five-year rate study. The five-year rate study was adopted, or was finalized in May and ultimately adopted in June of 2021. The study presented a 10-year financial plan for both the water and wastewater enterprises. In particular, I wanted to note that there was quite a bit of effort that went into that update, and council ultimately did adopt that study with some rate increases. The first of which took effect on July 1st of 2021, a 6% rate increase for your water enterprise, and subsequently a 12% rate increase effective July 1, 2022. But since then, the city did apply for and was successfully awarded a 3 million, approximately a $3 million grant from the Urban and Multi-Benefit Drought Relief Grant Program. We're going to talk a little bit about that this evening. And in addition, the council did allocate about $1.14 million in American Rescue Plan Act funds to the enterprise for funding a capital improvement project. Those funds currently, in accordance with ARPA requirements, you know, are parked in our general fund. So we haven't specifically transferred those to the water enterprise, but they will certainly contribute to a cost of capital improvement project. Last but not least, we did see, particularly in late 2021, some declines in revenue, particularly because the water shortage contingency rate hadn't taken effect yet, but we were witnessing considerable conservation by our water enterprise customers, which had effect on revenues. That has since corrected itself. But with that said, I want to go ahead and introduce our rate consultant, Mark Hildebrand. Mark is going to walk you through a presentation and providing an update on the impact of these material changes on our water enterprise. So with that, Mark, I'll turn it over to you.
Great, thank you, can you hear me okay?
And Mark, just so you're aware, we're seeing your backend of the presentation, the black screen, not the full presentation mode. Just wanted you to know if that's...
Really? Okay, now let me see if I can switch that. Let's see.
I see the presentation.
Yeah, does it have the big black borders on it, though, instead of...
Correct, yes, we're seeing your black, and we're able to see the next slide with notes.
Yeah, okay, let's see if I can...
If you click F5, it might be able to...
F5. No, that didn't do it, let me...
I also have your presentation, if you'd like me to share it, and just tell me to switch slides for you.
I will try sharing it a different way here. Let's see. Here we go.
Now we're viewing the agenda.
There we go, okay.
Perfect, thank you.
Great, thanks for letting me know. Thank you for having me again here this evening. As David pointed out, I will be going over some of the financial plan associated with the water enterprise. So the agenda here is to first describe some of the deviations that did occur from the financial plan as it was established last year. And then I'll show a revised financial forecast for the water enterprise and discuss next steps. So, by way of background, the city did undertake two rate studies, one for water, one for wastewater, back in 2021. And the rates for both water and sewer were adopted through a public hearing process at that time. The new rates went into effect starting July 1, 2021. And so the second round of rates just recently went into effect about a half, a couple weeks ago. Additional rate increases are scheduled each July 1st through 2024. In terms of deviations that we've seen, it's important to understand that, you know, when we do a financial plan, we're looking into the future, and nobody has a perfect crystal ball for what's going to happen. So we do our best with the data that's available to us and with the planning documents. And through iterative process, we try to develop the best possible numbers for the next five to 10 years. But there are a few things that did deviate, and so I've described some of the more substantial things here. First bullet, the water enterprise did receive a $3 million grant, which is great news. The general fund also received some ARPA funds, the American Rescue Plan Act, and allocated some of that money to the water funds, 1.14 million. And then, on the less good news, the water rate revenue for the last fiscal year, the fiscal year that just ended, did track slower than expected, lower than what we projected in the financial plan. And that was, we made some assumptions about the amount of revenue that the rate increases would create, as well as the additional revenue that would come from the water shortage surcharge. So, we'll talk about all three of these things over the course of this presentation. So in terms of the grant, it came from the Department of Water Resources, it was just over $3 million, and the purpose was, for the purpose of constructing drought-related projects. And so you can see that there are four projects listed below that were on the city's capital improvement program, but they were pushed pretty far out, they were, some were pushed beyond five-year period, and some were even pushed beyond a 10-year period. So, these four projects, well, seven, well, eight replacement, SCADA upgrades, so SCADA is the software that allows you to automate your system, and it helps really improve efficiencies with the system, as well as water efficiencies. And then the meter upgrade program. So all these things have been substantially accelerated to occur this year and next. And so it changed the cash flow in the water funds by that infusion of $3 million, and the city's managed to accelerate these projects as a result. The, I did want to point out that the meter upgrades will be receiving money from the grants, but only 50% of it will be funded by the grant. So it's kind of a, I mean, it's a blessing either way you look at it, but I'll call it a mixed blessing in the sense that it also forces the district, the city's hand in terms of spending in the other half. So it wasn't in the city's budget to spend the other 50% for this project, but since the grant money is available, this is a prime opportunity to just go ahead and deliver the entire project all at once. So we'll take advantage of that 50% grant while also using city funds that weren't originally budgeted to be used this soon. So this is a look at how the capital spending plan has changed. You can see in the light blue, the amount of capital spending that was expected to occur in the next 10 years. Sorry, the light blue is the new plan for capital spending, and the dark green is what was previously planned. So you can see there's a lot more capital spending activity that's going to occur in the next three years, which is going to be in part paid for through that grant, which is, which is great news. The, in terms of the water rate revenue shortfall, there was a shortfall, I went back and looked at some of the data to try to pinpoint how this occurred, because it was 10% lower than what we expected it to be. The reason this happened is that the water shortage surcharge was implemented a little slower than had been anticipated, especially during the key months, during the key summer months when people use the most amount of water. The surcharge was, was only 12% to 15%. Despite the, eventually ramped up to the full 25%, which is required for the level of drought that the city's currently experiencing. And so that, that was a short blip where there was a short, a revenue shortfall. But when I look at the last six months, and the surcharge being up to the 25%, everything's on track. So I would say that going forward, we're on track. There was just a short delay in generating the revenue that we had originally anticipated. Here is a graph of the cash, it's a cash flow pour from a view of the cash, the, sorry, the water funds. You might remember this graph from the presentations last year, but what you're looking at is you're looking at revenues in the background. So the green in the background represents revenues, and the columns that are superimposed on that are the expenses. So anytime the green is higher than the columns, that's a surplus here. And when the columns are higher than the background, that's a deficit year. And so the, what we're, you can see how the fund balance changes over time down here. So the red line is what we are anticipating at this time. So you can see that during the next few years, we are expecting a surplus in revenue that's mostly driven by the grants that are being received. You've seen the reserves being built up, but then being drawn down quite quickly, back down to the target level, which is the black line. The dashed line is what had previously been projected for the water fund. So you can see that we didn't have that increase in revenue because we didn't expect those grants to come in. But the ending point, I think the real takeaway, and the whole point of this update to council, is the fact that by 2026, we're expected to be right back on track. So in other words, that infusion of cash is really being offset by an increase of spending. The increase in spending is much needed, if you'll recall from the presentations last year, there is a lot of deferred capital spending. And so this is a, really a blessing for the city to be able to address a lot of those capital needs sooner than expected. But it does put us, it does keep us right on track with the forecast that we had anticipated previously. So, the recommendation, and I apologize, there was a slide that discussed the ARPA money that came in, that is money that's being used to help pay for the... I'm sorry, what I, I didn't point out is that part of the money, the ARPA funds are going to be helping to offset the other 50% of the meter upgrade costs. That's a detail that I misspoke earlier. So, those funds that are being transferred from the general funds are going to be very helpful to be able to mitigate those meter upgrade costs. So, final recommendation is, you know, we are leveraging the grant money and the ARPA money to accelerate projects. The rate revenue does appear to be back on track after falling short a little bit last year. And going forward, it looks like the financial forecast is still applicable, and, and I recommend that you keep adopting the rate increases that were adopted last year.
Great, we'll bring it back to the council, thank you, Mark, good presentation. Councilmember Bagby, would you like to go first?
Any additional comments from staff about the bill impact analysis, that last page? If there's any comments from staff about the analysis on the last page?
Well, I think...
Page 10 of the presentation.
About being back on track?
Yeah.
So, I think what is a key takeaway for council and members of our community is we were successful in receiving, well, applying for and receiving this $3 million grant. The, the grant, you know, represents an additional, you know, $3 million that ultimately was reflected in revenue in the water enterprise. And so, you know, at first glance, it appears like it's a windfall, if you will. But what we're really doing is, because the grant was specific to drought projects, and in the CIP schedule, those four projects that were listed were either carried out over time or in the future. So what we're doing is we're basically bringing those projects forward. We're accelerating the timing of those projects, so that, we're basically paying it upfront, if you will. We, as council may recall... We, as council may recall, when we talked about the rate setting process, there was a discussion about, do we consider pay as you go or do we want a debt, debt finance? And the decision was made to, to pursue the pay-go strategy. And so that means collecting enough revenue and building up that fund balance to pay for those significant capital projects. So in essence, we're, we're following that same principle. It's just we're now, we're accelerating those drought-related projects faster than we had anticipated when we prepared the rate study. So, a- and so we wanted to look at that carefully. That's the work that Mark did with, with the, the, the financial pro forma was assess, well, what's the impact down the road? And, and I think it, it does have a longer-term beneficial impact because it's, we're, we're now paying for those projects sooner with the grant funds. But it doesn't necessarily relieve the need to, in, in our, in our opinion, and in the analysis, I think supports that, to reduce the rates now. Because we, we see that, that it's still critical to continue to generate that, that, that additional revenue to keep us on track, again, to fund, you know, what are also some critical other CIP projects. We're, we're just really accelerating these drought-related projects that were funded, are, are planning to be carried out later in time. So I, you know, it's, it's, it's really kind of a temporal issue in a, in a way, in the sense that we're getting revenue now for projects that were planned later and we're carrying them out sooner. And so it's, it's, i- i- it doesn't necessarily provide a cash windfall to the enterprise that means that you could, you necessarily want to reduce rates now.
Thank you, David. Councilmember Paula.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, you know, I understand that. I think it's, it's exciting that we're able to move some of these much-needed projects fast forward them to present because a lot of these projects are way overdue and in need. So that's an exciting thing. And, you know, so I think long-term, we have a lot more work ahead of us in the water. And I think that we need to pay as we go. So it sounds good. I'd be interested to hear public comment at some point. Thank you.
Councilmember Cruz?
No, I, you know, I'm, I'm very happy to see this graph that is going to accelerate when we're going to even out much sooner than we had anticipated. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open it up to public comment. Michael, I can't see. Do we have anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this topic? Seeing none?
It's like no one online is raising their hand either, Mayor.
Give them a few seconds to raise their hand in case they want to speak on this topic. Okay. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. Any further comments or questions or anything on this? Yeah, no, I, I, it's funny, you look at it and it seems like you would have this surplus of money when you receive a grant. And, you know, it's, it's hard to understand that sometimes because you should have $3 million in your pocket that you could pass out to everyone. But having a shortfall already because we saved too much water. And so we didn't get the funds that we expected. And then fu- funding projects that we weren't planning to do until later that weren't included is great. And I'm excited for this to happen. Any other comments from the council? Councilmember Cruz, I see your microphone is off. Would you like to speak?
I'm having technical difficulties. Thank you very much. But I think it would be important to perhaps share this with the public, either in our site or with Cloverdale Connect, because very many people are inquiring why rates are going up. And again, you know, this is an ongoing question that we have been trying to answer for a while now, saying no improvements were done for whatever many years. And now it's critical, either they're done or we have no water. So that's my final comment on that one. Thank you.
Any other direction?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to share with the council at our Public Works Subcommittee meeting yesterday, we spoke a little bit about one of the things that the town of Windsor's implemented. And that is using, re-using water that ordinarily would not be used for irrig- and it's going to be used for irrigation. And they put this program in. I know this town of, or the city of Hillsburg also has a similar program, as well as several other towns and cities within the county. So I did ask the city manager for staff to contact the town of Windsor to take a look at that. It was a good article. And I think it's potentially, as we talk about drought, has the potential to allow our residents to access water and be able to maintain landscape and different things that are important to our community without using fresh water. So hopefully there's more to come on that in the future. But that's right up what we're trying to do drought-related, trying to make things available as quality of life. Thanks for our, our members of our community. Thank you.
I, I believe that's, would require tertiary treatment, which we don't currently have at the water treatment plant. So I, could you refresh my memory, city manager or assistant city manager? Where does tertiary treatment reside on our CIP currently?
Currently, the advanced treatment project is, is still a pending project in our, in our capital improvement program. Part of it is going to be contingent upon our five-year permitting process with the regional board and when, and if they trigger us to move to, through the regulatory process, advance treatment sooner than we might anticipate. Otherwise, it's, we'd probably be targeting it more along the five to 10-year timeframe. It is something that council is within your discretion. If you want us to, staff to move that forward sooner, we certainly can, you know, do, do the initial. There's just quite a bit of work that needs to be done to move from the current treatment process to advanced treatment, to, you know, evaluate the options, alternatives, feasibility. But that, this, it's not in our current work plan to, to undertake that work. But we are currently preparing for the next five-year permitting process. And, and there is a potential that that's an outcome as part of that process with the regional board.
Not a matter of if, it's a matter of when we're required to by the, the regional board. So I can keep us posted, but I, great presentation and thanks for bringing us up to date with some good news and a reality check. Much appreciated.
Councilmember Cruz, go ahead.
Yes, I, I second what Councilmember Bagby said, but also I think it would be important for all council members to visit the two plants mentioned, Hillsburg and Windsor, because it's, it's truly an eye-opening and it really allows all council members to understand what is the whole process and how much it costs. You know, as a, as a fellow of the water education program, I was able to visit this with other elected officials in the county and in other areas of California. And it's essential that people understand how much it costs and what is the process and the amount of personnel that is required and, and the whole regulation, regulatory requirements that are needed. It's not something that can happen overnight. Thanks.
Thank you. Are you clear on any direction that you've had at this point? Thank you. All right, moving on to D, the consent calendar. All items under consent calendar will be considered together by one action of the city council, unless any council member or member of the public requests that an item be removed and considered separately. As of right now, we have D5 pulled to be individual.
D1 and D4. I cannot vote D1. And I would like to pull D4.
Okay, Mark Cruz there. Okay, so with that, we would have 2, 3, and 6. Does anyone want to make a motion? If there isn't any other to pull.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move
Wait, wait, excuse me, Councilmember Paula. It's D4.
Correct. So if we had a motion for 2, 3, and 6, because we have pulled 1, 4, and 5.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and move item D2, 3, and 6.
Thank you. Yes, roll call, please.
To clarify, I just to move all of the items off of the consent calendar.
You are doing 2, items 2, 3, and 6 at this point?
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Mayor Lenz?
Aye.
Sorry for the confusion on that.
Okay, so with D1, Councilmember Cruz is not able to vote on it. So do we have a motion on that one and she can abstain on the vote?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move item D1.
Second.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Mayor Lenz?
Aye. And Councilmember Cruz abstains. Okay, D4, Councilmember Cruz?
Yes, no, I think it's a great item. However, I would like to see if perhaps there could be some collaboration with the police department and the school to be able to further educate the youngsters on some of the rules when it comes to walking, biking, skating, et cetera, on commercial areas of downtown. Even though there is signage, many times kids don't know to look for that because they haven't been instructed or even parents. So there are several opportunities where this could take place and that it could be a further education to the community so that we could truly have safe streets and sidewalks and areas for biking and so on. That's my comment on that. And this comes about because I was, I was approached by several parents, given that the children or the parents didn't know that there were rules posted on high poles as required by the code in terms of using bicycles on commercial areas. And, you know, it's nothing new. It's something that is kind of ongoing because I have been a plank or at the history center coming out and here comes the bicycle flying down sidewalk. So it's not only children, but adults also and youngsters who are irreverent to whatever common civility is. So I just wanted to comment on that. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Cruz. Any other comments?
I'd like to move the item.
I'd like to second it.
Okay, I'm going to open it up for public comment since we had the ability to discuss any public comment on this item. Seeing none, we'll bring it back and go for roll call.
Thank you, Mayor Lenz. Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Lenz?
Aye.
Okay, D5. Kevin, would you like to speak to it real quick?
Yes, Mayor, councilmembers, we asked this item be pulled just to inform the council that Mr. Ron Holman has pulled his application for alternate planning commissioner. He's not interested in the seat anymore. We do have Mr. Corey Kettle here. Kettle. He is being proposed as the alternate. We also are proposing in the motion that Commissioner Spengler be moved to a regular member. That will leave one alternate position open. And we'll, we'll be able to function fine with that alternate position open. We can continue to recruit for it. But just to let you know that the motion that you'll make will not include Mr. Ron Holman as the second alternate.
Thank you, Kevin. Councilmember Cruz, I see your hand.
Yes, I would like for the public to be reminded that to be on the planning commission, you could live within five miles radio, five-mile radios of Cloverdale, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that, so that people know that even if they live in certain area of River Road, they are eligible to apply to be in the planning commission. Most times people think that you have to be within the city limits and that is an exception.
Right, we do allow one person from outside and we currently do not have any. So that would be an option for a potential alternate.
Thank you for the clarification. Any comments from anyone else?
I'll move D5 as amended.
And I will second that.
I'll open it up to the public. Does anyone want to make a public comment or anyone that's in the audience might want to speak and introduce himself to the planning commission, maybe? Come on up to the mic for me, Mr. Kettle. Thank you. So thank you, Corey. Tell us, what do you do in town now? How long have you lived here? A little bit more?
So I moved up here in 92, actually. My dad worked as an operating engineer when they took the bypass out of Cloverdale, you know, making 101 off of the Boulevard. And went to high school here, graduated in class 98, Go Eagles. And I'm a local Realtor, helped, you know, people buy and sell homes around the property, around the area, you know, so. Looking to use some of that expertise and knowledge to help the city out and see what I can learn as well and.
Appreciate you stepping up. Seeing no other public com- thank you, Corey, I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Seeing no other public comments, no other hands, we'll bring it back for the roll call.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Mayor Lenz?
Aye.
And thank you so much for stepping up. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, Corey. Welcome to the team.
All right, E Communications. Anything other than the written that we've had?
No communications, Mayor.
Thank you. No public hearings. So moving on to G, new business, let me catch up here. G1, amendments to the city of Cloverdale's franchise agreement with Recology, Sonoma, Marin, and waste delivery agreement, franchised hauler agreement by and between the city, Republic Services of Sonoma County, and Recology, Sonoma, Marin to comply with Senate Bill 1383.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. At this time, I'd like to request our, our city clerk. We've got a number of attendees in the audience. I think almost all of them, well, Alexander Sullard, Celia Ferber, Debbie Williams, Emily Harris, Garth, Garth Schultz, if we can go ahead and invite those in as panelists, both representatives with Recology and R3 Consulting Group.
Thank you. You should be getting prompts now. If you haven't, if you can, please raise your hand.
Just to introduce this item, what's before you tonight are two, two amendments, one of which is an amendment to the city of Cloverdale's franchise agreement. We have a franchise agreement with Recology, Sonoma, Marin that was previously adopted by council with the Republican Empire Group. The, the amendment to the franchise agreement is necessary in order to address the requirements of Senate Bill 1383. Again, 1383 is state legislation that is intended to reduce the amount of organic material that's disposed in our landfills. Council did adopt an ordinance to effectuate and address the local requirements associated with SB 1383. So an amendment is required in the, in the, to, to the franchise agreement to address those requirements. In addition, the council did approve a waste disposal agreement, or waste, excuse me, waste delivery agreement that is between the franchise hauler and Republic Services who maintains and operates the landfill. The, included in your packet is a, what's referred to as an omnibus amendment that would effectuate the change to allow Recology to address disposal or maybe treatment of compost waste so that it's, it's no longer required to go through the central landfill. So those two amendments have been reviewed by our city attorney team. They've also been reviewed by R3 in, in consultation with Recology. And staff is recommending that you, that council take action to adopt those amendments by way of resolution that's included in your packet. The agenda provides quite a bit of detail and overview of those, those amendments. Happy to, to talk in more detail. And we do have joining us our representatives from both Recology and R3. If, if you have any questions, particularly technical questions. If you have any questions, particularly technical questions, Alex from R3 can assist with addressing those questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, David. Alex, do you have anything you want to add to this? Anything you want to say before we open it up?
Not at this time. Just if you have any questions, please go ahead.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Bagby? Councilmember Cruz, anything?
Or Paula, huh?
Okay. I'll open it up to the public. Anyone in the public have any questions or comments regarding this issue? Or this change? Nothing? Seeing nothing? And I see nothing online? Bring it back to the dais.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, yes.
Yeah, I just want to tell people in Recology that I am most grateful for their service. However, I cannot fill up my big can of compostables. So there has to be an alternative for elderly, small households, et cetera, for us to be able to help comply with 1383 on our personal level. I hate to continue to throw food scraps and fruits and peels and all those things away because I just can't have enough to fill up that can that is so big. So that is something to contemplate for the future so that we can all continue to contribute to the effort by Zero Waste Noma, by Recology, and in compliance with state law. Thank you very much.
I have to agree. You know, I have a 4,000 square foot lot and a lot of fruit trees and a lot of landscaping and I do a pretty good job getting that green bin pretty full, but when I see that, when I saw those green bins distributed at apartments and condos that don't have to do their own landscaping, it just seems a little bit ridiculous and probably not a really great solution. And so, yeah, just like we have the smaller trash cans for the trash receptacles at different levels, it would be really nice to see Recology step out and find a better solution for multifamily housing because, yeah, they barely have room for, you know, the big blue bin and their trash can and now we're asking them to find room for a green bin that they really don't need because they don't do their own grass, they don't do their own trimming, all that kind of stuff. But I'm very happy to see us moving into that, the direction of getting green waste collected at multifamily because it's just something that's really been needed for a long time, but maybe not the best implementation to have it at the same volume as somebody who has to do the landscaping for, you know, for a larger lot. And then just also on another note, as far as us moving forward and continuing the conversation with our constituents, people keep approaching me and they're like, you know, this is great. Actually, this got me off my butt. We're actually composting. We've talked about composting for five years. I'm actually composting in my yard and I'm, you know, and we're putting, you know, extra food waste in our green bin. But there's a disconnect, there's also a disconnect because of COVID. We haven't been able to do the amount of community outreach that we normally do and people are asking me for the little green bin that you put on your kitchen counter. So I'm like being, so there must be some pent-up demand if I'm having members of the public ask me, hey, when are we going to get our little green bin that we keep in our kitchen so that we can put it in our green, big green bin? Because they're get, people are starting to get in the habit of putting those kitchen scraps in the green bin as well, which is just kind of a retraining thing, but because the pandemic has really slowed down the outreach and the community education, one would think. But then on the other hand, people are clamoring and asking for it. So I'd like to make sure that in the next couple of months, we're working closely with Recology on community outreach and providing those goodies that people just love. And it just kind of seems to incentivize them like, you know what, we're finally going to get it together and we're going to start collecting the green waste from our kitchens and putting it into our green bins. So those are the two things that, they're just little things, they're just little tweaks that need to get adjusted, but you know, for the, for people to change their habits, it's just two important things that we can help them to do the right thing with. So, and thanks so much for all of your help. I know that through Leslie Lukashtu at Zero Waste that the strong partnership that we have with our partners at Recology are really putting Sonoma County and all of the cities ahead of a lot of other communities who are, have been struggling with this implementation a little bit, but we have, that partnership has been a really great catalyst to move this process forward. So thanks so much for everybody's, yeah, great staff report and for helping us move forward in this.
Thank you, Councilmember Bagby. I see Celia has her hand as one of our panelists. Celia, please go ahead.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. Thank you for your comments, Councilmember Cruz and Councilmember Bagby. My name's Celia Ferber and I'm the Waste Zero Manager for Recology Sonoma Marin. And so I just wanted to address two points that you both made. And I wanted to clarify that we do provide the smaller green carts for, you know, there are a lot of residents that, you know, like Councilmember Cruz mentioned, the taking out a large 96 gallon green cart is problematic weekly, especially if you can't fill it, if it's not the time of year where you're doing much gardening. We do have 32 gallon green carts available. So it's just, it's as simple as calling our customer service department and asking for a smaller cart and we can go ahead and trade that out. And then regarding the kitchen pails, those have been so popular this year, which is very encouraging. We've had them available for pickup at our office and we've gone through thousands this year. Just people, and that's very encouraging because that's, those are people who maybe weren't previously composting their food scraps. They've picked up a kitchen pail and now they're, now they're participating in the program. So we love to see that. The pails are fairly expensive and we do have a great partnership and working relationship with Zero Waste Sonoma. And they, they in conjunction with each city in Sonoma County recently applied for grant money and they qualified and so they were able to order more kitchen pails. And so we are going to be coordinating with Zero Waste Sonoma, the kitchen pails will arrive in September and so we'll have many more pails to help, you know, hand out to residents. And I think that covers it. Thanks so much for letting me speak.
Thank you, Celia. Great information. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Great. Oh, thank you, Celia. It's nice to see you, even if it isn't, if it's still on Zoom. So would I like to see, and if we need to kind of monitor this at Planning and Sustainability, that'd be great. I'd love to see us get that information about the 32 gallon out to members of, you know, people on the newsletter push that information out via social media. I wasn't aware of that, Celia, so thanks so much. So we can get that number and how you do that out to our ratepayers, that would be great. And then it sounds like the pails might be available in time for the Harvest Fair, which I believe is October 1st, and that would be a great event to reach families and residents. So we might want to put a pin in that and shoot for getting some pails from Zero Waste for that event.
Absolutely. And we are coordinating with Zero Waste and Recology on getting some of those cans delivered to Cloverdale so that they can be available to our residents right here at City Hall. So we're working with Zero Waste on getting those delivered. Otherwise, I know residents can go directly to Recology, but the offices in Santa Rosa for those folks who maybe can't make it to Santa Rosa, we will have them in September, late August at City Hall available.
Great teamwork, thank you.
Councilmember Cruz, go ahead.
Yes, I'm thinking that maybe we should do something like what we did with the Russian River Watershed Association to have a drive, like on a Saturday, where some of the council members were here at the plaza handing out the pails and all the other goodies for water saving tips. And perhaps we could do that one Saturday and whomever doesn't come, then they can go to City Hall to pick it up. And I'll definitely talk to Sloan and Cincy about this. So those are the people at Zero Waste. So thank you very much.
Anyone have a motion?
I move the item.
You want to read the resolution by title?
Oh, you know, I'm doing my phone. It's very difficult to do both things.
Anyone else?
Councilmember Paula, would you like to make the motion?
Well, I'll go ahead and make the motion. I'll read the resolution by title only, introduce it. Resolution, City Council, City of Cloverdale, approving the First Amendment to the Franchise Agreement with Recology Sonoma Marin, Inc., for collection, disposal, and processing of solid waste, recollectable, and compostable materials and related activities between the City of Cloverdale and Recology Sonoma Marin and the omnibus amendment to the Waste Delivery Agreement and Franchise Hauler Agreement to comply with Senate Bill 1383 for solid waste management and authorize a city manager to execute the amendments on behalf of the city.
I see Councilmember Cruz waving and saying she seconds. With that, roll call.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Mayor Lenz?
Aye. Okay, moving on, G2, update on R3 Consulting Group, special rate review and a performance review of the franchise agreement between the city and Recology Sonoma Marin.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This item is really an update on the process that we have retained R3 Consulting Group to conduct a review of a special rate request that has been, was submitted by Recology Sonoma Marin. Tonight, we're going to receive a presentation, an update on the current status of the special rate review as well as their performance assessment of the Recology's performance under the franchise agreement. So with that said, I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to Alex and Garth, our team at R3, who's been conducting the performance review and special rate review on the city's behalf.
Excellent. Thank you, David, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, as well as members of the public. I'm Garth Schultz with R3 Consulting Group, President of the company and lead on this project, along with Alex and others. You should be able to see my PowerPoint presentation now. Is that up on your end?
Yes, it is.
Excellent, great. So this is an update on the overall process and in addition to being an update, we are seeking some feedback and direction to the council so that we can bring forth options for rate adjustment for you next month, meeting the council's interest, given the findings to date. So briefly, with respect to this presentation, cover the background, give you an update on the special rate review application and our review of it from Recology, a brief update on the performance review, discuss the options, alternatives that can be on the table for the September 1 rate setting process, and then seek some feedback and direction from the council in the process. So as you've already heard this evening, you do have a solid waste franchise agreement with Recology Sonoma Marin for the provision of solid waste collection services, just in addition to everything you heard in the last couple of items on this, just broadly speaking, you know, solid waste means garbage, organics waste composting, recyclables collection, as well as other services that are available to residents and businesses in the community and Recology providing now SB 1383 services, programs, and compliance support to you as the city. That agreement started in 2011 with the former solid waste operator, Redwood Empire Disposal, which was a branch of the Rado Group. That contract and the assets of the Rado Company were assigned over to Recology Sonoma Marin in 2017 and that contract remains in place today, though it does expire a short three years away on June 30th, 2025. Within the terms of the agreement, there is a provision for Recology, you know, with the city, to initiate a special review of the rates and they can, the city does have in its sole and exclusive discretion the ability to grant some, all, or none of the request of special rate adjustment. Along with the special rate review, there is a provision to conduct a performance review, which we are midway through, and that's essentially to, you know, provide a level of analysis to determine whether Recology is performing to the terms and conditions of the agreement, meeting best industry standards for safety and other metrics. And ultimately, it's being undertaken to identify whether there's any gaps in performance or noncompliance with the terms and conditions of the agreement. Jumping to the special rate review, so I do want, we're providing a summary today of the initial rate request and some of the findings to date, but again, seeking some council direction on alternatives that you might consider anticipated next month for the potential September 1 normal rate adjustment date. So what we found based on the materials and application supplied by Recology as well as a variety of responses to requests for supplemental information, all of which they've been very cooperative in providing, is that Recology is currently operating at a loss here in Cloverdale, but also at a loss throughout Sonoma County. This isn't coming as a surprise to me and our firm. We've reviewed the financials of the former operating company, Redwood Empire Disposal and Rado, since even prior to Recology taking over these franchise agreements. And we knew at the time, there was a deficit between rate revenues and operating costs for most of the agreements throughout Sonoma County. The one exception at the time was Santa Rosa, which if you've been paying attention to the news the last five years, had their rates jump significantly as the result of a competitive procurement process, which resulted in the award of that agreement to Recology at the time. All of the other rates in Sonoma County have essentially been artificially low per those prior Rado Group rates and there is, has been a delta between rate revenues and operating costs. What does that mean here for the Recology operations in Cloverdale? It means effectively, they're not achieving any profit, not a reasonable profit, no profit. There is a loss on the books for operations here in the city and again, broadly speaking, throughout the rest of Sonoma and Marin Counties for Recology's operations. So what Recology's put forward in this application is their request to cover primarily three elements. This preexisting gap between those rate revenues and the operating costs, a normal set of increases in operating costs, increases in fuel and capital and labor and the like, and then new costs for implementing SB 1383. That's really kind of an additional element to the special rate review. The cost increase for SB 1383 was referenced in the prior item that you just approved in the amendment for SB 1383 programs and services, and that's an 8.7% increase for those costs alone. But all together, we're looking at the kind of entire rate package and did justify those and review those proposed costs for SB 1383 terms and services. So what are we doing for you on this matter? Reviewing Recology's financial statements for the operating company as a whole, as well as supplemental statements pertaining to the city's operations specifically. And that's looking at, you know, historical revenues and expenses by line, but also forecasted expenses and the revenues that would be needed to meet forecasted expenses plus a reasonable profit. What we do in these processes is we're looking to see if there's justification for and establish the reasonableness of the forecast proposed by the company. And when we find adjustments that can be made to make sure that they are justified and reasonable, we propose them. Here we have identified a few that do have the effect of slightly reducing the overall rate increase, though a sizable increase remains on the table. And we are in the process now of putting the final touches on our draft report. We're doing that with staff and then have a final report ready for the council as a part of your upcoming likely August rate hearings. So what this slide shows, as does the next, is the proposed maximum increases in monthly services for ratepayers. I say maximum because these are the amounts that were proposed by Recology, to which we've already identified adjustments that would bring these down slightly. It's also maximum because there's alternatives that are on the table, which we're seeking your input on tonight, around potentially further reducing these either by reduced profits or by spreading out the rate increase over a period of several years. So this is the maximum rate adjustment request that's on the table for the September 1 effectiveness date. Starting with the residential on the upper half of the slide, for 20 gallon customers, which are 19% of your residential customer base, the proposed maximum increase is on the order of 1170 a month. For 32 gallon customers, which are over half of Cloverdale's residential rate base, it's 1603 a month and you can see the remaining figures for 64 and 96 gallons, which are comprised together just under 30%. Similar increases for commercial monthly garbage service, just a point of clarification, I say garbage service, but with respect to both of these, they are bundled rates inclusive of garbage recycling and organic service. they are bundled rates inclusive of garbage recycling and organic service. You can see the increase for cart customers in gallons and bin customers in cubic yardage frequency. Your most common commercial size is this four-cubic-yard customer, though they are spread out through a variety of others. One thing we aren't prepared to show tonight, but will be prepared to show in our report and the next time we see you, likely next month, would be a comparison of rates, comparing Cloverdale's current and proposed or alternative rates to rates in Windsor, Healdsburg, unincorporated nearby Sonoma County, other parts of Sonoma County on the whole, as well as some representative rates out of Marin County. So that'll give you a barometer under which to compare where your current rates are today and where they may be as a result of approving part or all of Recology's special rate increase request. This table is an updated version of the tables that was in your agenda packet. I say updated in that this one value here was somehow incorrect in the packet. We think we had a formula error or something. So, oh, excuse me, I clicked my button. So this 5810 per month is the current effective rate for a 96-gallon residential customer, and that's the total increase as maximally proposed under Recology's special rate request. This figure here, this 3253, is showing inaccurately in the attachment to the staff report, so please do consider these figures as updated. All other figures remain the same as what you saw. Just to break this down for you as the council, you can see the current rates here in gray. One column over are the increase amounts for the SB 1383 programs and services, which were the subject of the amendment to the franchise agreement that you adopted in the prior agenda item. This is the 8.7% increase for those services. In any given rate adjustment year, there is this annual indexed adjustment through what's called a refute rate index. Because this is a special rate review request, the rate review request by nature incorporates the magnitude of a refuse rate index, but we show it here for the purposes of just giving you a sense of what's normal kind of cost of living increase in the rates that you would expect under normal conditions, and then what's the magnitude of the additional amount in the special rate review, resulting in the total proposed increase to the rates and what the resultant rates for the coming 2022, 2023 year would be. Again, maximum rates to which we have already identified some adjustments, so when you see us next month, the maximum will be slightly lower than this, once we complete our analysis, and to which you may further seek and provide adjustment or recommendation for alternatives to us tonight. Pivoting briefly until we get to the meat of the subject we are approaching the council with tonight, just to give you a sense of the performance review update. So we are reviewing all the terms and conditions of relevance within the agreement and then assessing whether Recology is in compliance with them. That's through records request, onsite review of operations, reviewing their safety practice and maintenance records. Alex and I have driven through the community, looking at carts and containers to ensure that they, carts out in the field are a match to what's in Recology's billing records and that people are paying for in their monthly rates. We've also looked at the collection operations, reviewing billing and financial practices and controls, ultimately just ensuring that Recology is keeping its nose clean and well operating ship, which will be valuable in terms of considering the rate increase and potential for extending the term of the agreement, which is subject to one of the next slides. In terms of status update, we haven't identified critical issues that would be a barrier to considering the rate adjustment or potential extension to the agreement, which might help you with some of the rate adjustment concerns. Our review is in the final stages, and we're looking to wrap up our report here shortly and bringing that to you as a part of the August council meeting, so that you know the full results at that time. Home stretch here. So again, there are options on the table with respect to a September 1 rate adjustment. The September 1 is your normal date for taking rate adjustments, and if we were moving forward to that, we would likely come forward for a rate hearing towards the end of August. So we are interested in the council's feedback with respect to alternatives so that we can prepare, along with Recology and staff recommendations for that rate hearing. So as referenced in the prior slide, under a special rate request, the city does have the right to grant none of the increase. In that event, the RRI, the underlying refuse rate index annual adjustment, would still apply, as would the SB 1383 increase, so that Recology can fulfill the terms and conditions of the amendment you just adopted. But to be clear, based on the findings we've seen, that would mean that Recology's revenues would fall below expenses. They would still be, for the remaining years of this agreement, unless other future action were considered, not covering their expenses plus a reasonable profit. But that is an option. Second option is that the city may grant some or all of the special rate increase, rate increase request. That could be a one-time adjustment, effective this year, without considering any extension to the agreement, but as Recology has put on the table as an alternative, an ability to reduce the increase by accepting a lower profit margin while also requesting a 10-year increase to the agreement. The in fact of reducing profit would be somewhere on the order of a 2% reduction to what's being proposed. A third option would be to phase in the rate adjustment over a period of years. Recology has proposed increase, or sorry, phasing in the requested increase, these figures here, adjusted by us, over a period of approximately four years. That would be about a reduction of half to what you saw on the prior slide. So instead of the adjustment shown on those prior slides, it would be roughly half that, the final number still to be worked out, and then with the remainder spread over the following three years. For this outcome, Recology is requesting a 15-year extension to the agreement. So with respect to direction from council tonight, we are seeking your areas of feedback about your preferences and what we might bring forward to you so that you have something to act on in August. But we do want you to bear in mind the upcoming scheduled expiration of this existing agreement. Again, under three years away. If the council is not interested in considering options that would extend the agreement, you're still going to be in the position of needing to arrange for future services. And you could do that via separate negotiations with Recology, not associated with the special adjustment whatsoever, and/or you could go into a competitive procurement space. The point here that I'm trying to make sure the council is aware of is that though three years can seem like a long time, in solid waste contracting world, it's not very long. Ultimately, you would want to have been concluded with whatever process you are going to undertake approximately one year prior to the expiration of the agreement. In order to conclude by June 30, 2024, you really need to have a sense of your direction, whether it's negotiations or a competitive procurement, by around this time next year, June, July, 2023. So I say all of this so that you have some context for understanding the value of Recology's extension offer and what it may mean, and knowing that if you don't have an extension associated with these rate adjustments, you'll still need to look to some way of securing for ongoing solid waste services with action effectuating those procurement pathways sometime in the next 12 months. I know that was a mouthful, but again, you have an upcoming expiration of the agreement. Just to summarize where we're seeking feedback, and then happy to take your questions and comments and direction, we're looking for feedback on whether you prefer just a one-time increase this year with no consideration of an extension, or whether you might prefer a phased-in approach to rate adjustment, which would result in lower 2022 rates and other elements adjusting over the course of the following three years. The trade-off of that, as proposed by Recology, is a 15-year extension to the agreement. Or you could consider a one-time increase to rates, but with a reduced profit margin, thereby also bringing down the rate adjustment for 2022, also with an extension offer in place. Or whether you have other priorities and ideas you'd like us to consider, if there's other options that you might desire for us to prepare in advance of a rate hearing next month, what might those be and what the various conditions or attributes look like? With that, I'm happy to take your questions and comments. Thank you so much for your time. Again, Garth Schultz with R3 Consulting. We work for you as public agencies. We don't work for Recology. We play well with them now, so thank you for the effort.
Thank you, Garth. If possible, can I have you put that shared screen back up with the last slide that had the four options that you are proposing?
Let me find it, since it apparently closed the minute I brought it down.
So they knew what we were talking about.
Yep, just bear with me a second.
You.
It was, yeah, Slide 8.
Getting there.
Just so it helps with the public and everyone else when we are discussing this.
I have a question for staff, or, and I guess, kind of just as a starting point for me, I'm not saying I'm going with this option, but with your experience in negotiating contracts of this nature, are you comfortable with that 15-year term, or is that something that's not comfortable for you as a city manager? And then maybe the R3 staff might have some feedback on that as well. And I kind of, I just want to start there and work backwards if I need to.
Well, I think, to answer your question directly, extension of 15-year seems like quite a long period of time in the future, and there's tremendous uncertainty that I think we're going to, you know, looking out 15 years from now in the solid waste industry, what it's going to look like. I would anticipate there could be considerable changes. But with that said, and as kind of alluded to by R3's team, Garth, solid waste business maybe operates on a little bit of a slower timeframe. So, you know, they forecast revenues when they do their pro forma maybe a little bit longer than, you know, a typical company because of the nature of the type of business that solid waste is. So, and partly it gives me pause, but I also recognize that sometimes a longer timeframe is what's necessary for this particular industry group.
Councilmember Paula?
I'm going to hold my comments till after public comment. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Cruz?
Yes, I would like to know how come there is not an alternative to have a phased-in approach with a 10-year extension?
I can answer that. I can answer that for you, council member, if you like.
Yes, please.
So these are as proposed originally by Recology. There's certainly, you know, pending feedback from the council. If your preference would be for a phased-in approach with a 10-year extension option, that's something we can bring back to Recology and discuss whether that would be something they'd be willing to agree to under what terms. So that's exactly the kind of feedback we're looking for tonight, is if that would be the kind of preference that the council might have in terms of direction, that gives us something to act on and discuss with Recology.
I'm also a little concerned, excuse me, just a second. I'm also a little concerned about the timeframe, because as part of the board in Zero Waste Sonoma, there have been changes that have come about that we had no idea we would be facing with some of the contractors, you know, subcontractors that Zero Waste Sonoma works with. So it's, it's a little nervous to think of 15 years or 10 years. That's it. Sorry, David. Go ahead.
Well, Mayor, members of council, I was just going to add that to think about it from a 10-year timeframe is, certainly has precedent within the county. For instance, the town of Windsor actually has a mandatory bidding requirement every 10 years. It's built into their town's municipal code. So again, they're kind of thinking along that similar lines, is to reevaluate every 10 years. And so thinking about the timeframe under which, if council wants to consider a proposed amendment, extending the franchise agreement, you know, a different timeframe than what is proposed, I think that's well within your authority and certainly would be critical feedback for us as we evaluate alternatives that are available, you know, what the impact is to rates in terms of looking at, you know, if there's a preferred alternative timeframe.
Thank you, David. I see Nikki Burke from Recology had a comment as well.
Hi, yes, I just wanted to respond to the concerns about the 15-year extension. That was proposed in the effort to spread the initial increase out over a longer time period. It's not that we could not propose an alternative that spread the increase over a less, fewer years, fewer than four, and had a 10-year contract extension. So if that's what's important to the council, then that's certainly something Recology is willing to work on.
Councilmember Cruz, your hand is still up. Do you want to comment on that? Okay, just checking. Anything else from the council? Okay, let's open it up to the public. Anyone in the audience have any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, anyone on your screen, Michael, because I can't see. There he goes.
No one is raising their hand at this time, Mayor.
Okay. And we'll bring it back to the dais.
I am also concerned about a 15-year contract. That's way too far. It's way beyond us, and it takes the power out of the council, I believe. Even the 10-year makes me nervous, just to be honest. I, I, go ahead.
If I could, I'm sorry. I just, I think going to competitive bid is also risky, because first of all, finding somebody that might be willing, and I'd like the city manager and staff to chime in on that, because I know when Recology took over the contract, it was risky. We didn't have a lot of options, and it was, so maybe, David, you can just address that. So, you know, it's not, we may not do so well going out to competitive bid, and it may be a whole lot more money than we anticipate. So it's not like there's a lot of choices. So, David, can you comment on that, please?
Great comment, Councilmember Paul, and I think your comment's on target with reflecting the nature of the industry. It's not, in my opinion, a competitive space. There's very few businesses that provide the type of services that Recology offer. So there is a tremendous risk. When you put the type of services that are provided out to bid, that, you know, the result could be very significant increases in rates, and I think that is reflected in some of the current rates that you see in Sonoma County. I think the rate increases that happened in Santa Rosa, that was a reflection of their putting the process out to bid, and likewise, in the town of Windsor, both experienced significant rate increases. So there is some benefits to negotiating the rates. I think it's also important to be said that, you know, this effort that we're undertaking this special rate review is a cost that's being burdened by Recology. They're, by contract, they're paying for the special rate review, as well as the costs associated with conducting that review, as well as the performance review. So it's not an inexpensive endeavor to do that work. If we choose to go out to bid, the costs will be a city cost, and most likely that's be burdened by our general fund. And I think, looking at our neighboring agencies, it's a very expensive cost to put the necessary documents together for the bid process and so forth. So that's just, and I'm not trying to say that to discourage council from really seriously looking at that alternative, but it is reality that there is considerable cost and staff time associated with the procurement process for negotiating a new franchise agreement.
Just to finish, thank you for that. You know, my feelings after hearing and reviewing the whole packet, you know, I would not expect any business to operate at a loss. I mean, as we all know, things have gone up considerably, including fuel costs, dump fees, labor, et cetera. And so Recology has been a good company for our city. They have stepped up. They have, they provide the street sweeping services for our community. They do several, I guess, clean-your-house pickups kind of thing, once or twice a year, as well as when we have special events, they do bring the containers up. So they're very, they're kind of, they're very community orientated, and they've been good to work with. So I would be more inclined to want to stay with them if we can negotiate a good, long-term, phased-in approach, because I don't see any reason that we would want to move from this service. So that's my feelings. Thank you.
Thank you. Garth, I see your hand up. You have a comment?
Thank you. Just with respect to a couple of the questions that have been raised around the potential riskiness of a competitive procurement, and then also with the length of the agreement, I just thought I'd shed a little bit of color. David was right in referencing the outcomes of the City of Santa Rosa and Town of Windsor. Both of those were, you know, not resulting in cost savings to the rate pairs, but were reflective of cost of service. Both of those were competitive endeavors with rates that were not far out of whack with where those rates ultimately ended. In considering a competitive procurement, you have to consider your market space and the variables that are at play. In this case, you know, In this case, you know, the really significant component of the rate that's charged is not something that a variable, a variable that a new proposer really could change for you in the fact that you have a waste delivery agreement to the county landfill and transfer station system at rates that are fixed and set by the county. Those are out of control of Recology. They'd be out of the control of any other solid waste operator. The other thing to kind of consider is, you know, who's active in this market space? Recology has the majority of service in Sonoma County. There are other actors, my assessment, other actors aren't very well poised to provide a competitive response to a potential RFP or bidding process for Cloverdale. That's partially by virtue of geographic conditions and you don't really have operators to the north that, you know, I believe would be really able to provide a more competitive value to Recology. So that is just to say, it could be done, but it definitely would carry some risks. And the, the nature of the solid waste marketplace right now is pretty ripe with risks with respect to the state law obligations of SB 1383, changing conditions with respect to the labor and truck laws. There's just a bunch of liabilities that they have to undertake. The reality here, and this is typically the case, and I'm not saying this because it's Recology or this community only, but it tends to be the case that incumbent haulers have more of an ability to assess the risk and keep the rate fair for rate pairs in this current marketplace. And just a final thing in terms of regular terms of agreements, it is relatively common to see those in 10-year increments because that's associated with the depreciation lifecycle of the main asset in the trucks. 15 years have not been uncommon in this recent kind of risk, rife marketplace. Five years definitely is something that's kind of on the order of being a bit too short in order to maximize the investment in the capital assets and spread out depreciation and interest costs in those. So just wanted to give a little bit of color and thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to get that 15-year term question out of the way so that if staff saw this report and went ahead with that as a bullet point, but we're cringing, I could find out. There's like a small amount of cringe, but I think that it, I appreciate Recology jumping in saying, hey, this is so that we can get the, the rates where they need to be over a slower period of time and that's just an option that pencils out for that. I kind of look at it as, you know, do you want a 10-year car loan or a, you know, five-year car loan? And what are the payments going to pencil out to, you know, on a monthly basis? What can you afford on a monthly basis? So I appreciate that they gave us that, that option, but we've also given some feedback. And I think that R3 has been very diplomatic as well because honestly, this is not surprising. We, we knew that Rado did not invest in their infrastructure and we, we, we knew that, that this day was, was coming if Recology came in to serve us. And so far, I, I've just been very pleased with Recology's service. They are incredibly community-minded. They're a great partner to work with. I think that it would be very cost prohibitive for us to go out for a bid. So I like the options that are, are in front of us and I'd like to see R3 move forward for us on, on, on our behalf. I think that these are, those are a great starting point and let, let's see what we can come back with. I'm, I'm ready to, you know, support us, support us moving forward and with what they've laid, with what, with what they've laid out.
And I would second what councilmember Bagby said about your service and the amount of professionalism in clean vehicles and things that we have experienced with Recology compared to the prior. I haven't had a truck break down in front of my house in years and it's a great thing because the hydraulic leaks that we received were multiple on my block. And so we're very appreciative of that. You know, I've personally called customer service and within a day, the problem's been handled and it wasn't like that in the past. So we do appreciate everything you're doing. Now, on behalf of the community, when I sit and look at a almost 60% increase, I need to be able to explain that. And it's, I can understand it, but when someone says, I don't care if they're operating at a loss, that's their problem. I, I need, I need you guys, when you come bring, when you work with us and you come back, have some very third grade level clear points, things that you're going to do for our community that's going to show how much you appreciate us as much as we appreciate you and things that you would be willing to offer. I, I would just, I'm just putting that on the table that as your mayor, I, I know we're a lower income community. People look for things like the little, things like, you know, maybe picking up a chair on the side of the road and things like that that you already do, but make it more clear so that, hey, you have all these options. Make it easier for our community to see that, to see that you're really working with us as well. But thank you. I appreciate it. Councilmember Cruz?
Yes, I, I second everything that Melanie and Mayor Lance have said. I think it would be important also to have been writing all the multiple agency efforts that you have that benefits our community so that, you know, the blow is not so hard. At the same time, I, I would like to see another alternative to the phased-in approach if we go with the 10-year, which I guess that's the minimum amount of time that would make it pencil out for you. So I, I think I would like to see one additional alternative in that list. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Paula?
No, actually, I said what I, I just, I'm comfortable with going to 15 or 10, but I, I definitely would like to see it spread out.
Same. So it sounds like everyone has good direction to negotiate. Is there any more questions or comments or concerns? Garth, SEU?
I just wanted to just summarize the direction we've heard, just to make sure it, it meets the, the council's understanding of that direction. But what I'm hearing here is a, a level of comfort in considering an extension, a preference for a shorter-term extension, but wanting to see the impacts of a phased-in scenario, whether that's for a longer-term extension with a longer-term phase-in or a shorter-term extension with a consequently shorter-term extension. Those are the, what I'm hearing in terms of preferences. When we bring that to you, we'll of course compare it to what the rate adjustment would be like without those extensions or phased-ins, just for context and for communication to the community. And then also, I think, along with that, just a bit of a reflection of the value of these services to the community when this is brought forward next month.
Thank you. Great. Thank you, everyone, for that as a well-done and we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving forward into subcommittee reports. Finance, admin, and police. Vice mayor is not here, so the next meeting is scheduled for August 1st. Planning and sustainability?
Councilmember Bagby.
Okay. Planning and sustainability? Did that one? Sorry, I'm sorry. Public Works and Facilities?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next meeting would be August 23rd at 1:30 PM at City Hall.
A Joint City and Fire. Next meeting is scheduled for October 10th, but they haven't had a meeting in two years, I believe. A Joint City Schools, the next meeting is scheduled for September 19th. If we need a special meeting, there will be one scheduled and we'll make sure it's out to the public. And then the next homeless community advisory group, the last meeting was canceled. Next meeting scheduled for August 9th.
At 1:30.
At 1:30. Thank you. Okay. Council reports, any verbal reports? Seeing none? Yes, councilmember Cruz?
Yes, I submitted mine in, in writing. However, I would like to announce that after a lot of efforts, Cherokee apartments have electricity as of today.
Very nice. Thank you. Okay. Information reports?
No reports, mayor.
Legislative reports, letters of support or opposition?
None at this time, mayor.
City manager report?
No reports.
City attorney report? Wow. All right. Status of water supply?
Brief update on water supply. We are, well, staff has executed the voluntary drought agreement with the partners in the Upper Russian River watershed. That is currently in effect. There, there is a pending decision by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, or FERC, on a variance request from PG&E that could potentially impact inflows from the Potter Valley project into Lake Minassino, which could have a, an impact on water supplies within Lake Minassino. We're, we're kind of waiting in a decision from, from FERC on, on, on that request from PG&E. There will be quite a bit of evaluation once that decision is made on what, what, what the impact will be. And so we're, we're kind of in a wait-and-see mode to see what that decision is and what impact it might have. Potentially if the variance request is granted in full, there's a possibility that the regional board could, could halt the voluntary drought agreement process, but we'll, we'll really have to wait to see the outcome of that decision before we know more. So we're just kind of tracking that effort. There's not a lot of information coming out of the federal government in terms of where FERC is on their review, so we're just kind of wait, wait and see.
COVID-19 emergencies?
I just wanted to mention that the Sonoma County produces COVID-19 messages. I did forward that to council for council's review.
All right. Future agenda items? Anyone? Councilmember Cruz, anything?
Not yet. I am communicating with the county relating to tribal affairs and some activities. So as soon as something is organized, I will share with the council.
Councilmember Paula? I had, the flag policy has not made it back to us yet.
The flag policy was referred to council subcommittee, so it's a, it's a work in progress. We continue to coordinate with, with our city attorney on development of a draft policy. We have not lost sight of the need to develop that policy.
Which subcommittee has that?
That will go to, I think council referred that to finance admin.
I thought, I thought we, okay, you're right. Okay, is, and that'll be, the next meeting is August 1st, so hopefully that'll be there.
Yeah, we, we don't have it ready to review yet, but as soon as we do, we'll be bringing that forward.
Okay. Let's, if we could, I, I really wanted to see that two weeks after we did things in June. And here we are a month later. Okay, written reports, information. Sorry, got to catch up. All right, that's it. So, meeting adjourned at 7:44. Thank you, everyone.